And I'm going to ask Dan to lead us in the pledge.
It's right there.
Our pledge is to comply with the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and without evil, liberty, and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. I enjoyed hearing about the last meeting and thank you, Dan, for meeting us fearlessly. While I sat for three overtimes through the hockey state championship and was thrilled with the outcomes. So, I am very appreciative and I would also say I did not think once about the board meeting in those six periods of hockey. And Dan caught me up, so thank you, guys. Any comments from the public on items that are not on the agenda? There are none. Any board acknowledgements?
Actually, I'd like to make an introduction, if I may. A special guest who I didn't know was going to spend some time with us, Andrew Pond, who chairs the Smiley School Board at Bolton this year. You probably can tell it's why you're here, but I just wanted to acknowledge that, he's not moving to Aspen. But Andrew has just done a fabulous job in leading the Bolton community and his board in sort of getting their heads wrapped around what a MUD is, Modified Union District. And I really applaud his efforts over the last several years, having attended a number of community meetings, which Andrew spoke at, you know, just very articulate and clear about your vision and a commitment to good governance. And I think that might be a reason why you're visiting tonight, but it's really nice to see you. Congratulations on the communication.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
So I'm on the Modified Union School Board and I'm just interested in seeing how you folks do things and if I can steal anything good.
Thank you for joining us. Welcome. All right, any other board acknowledgements?
Well, of course, I'm going to acknowledge. So, Junior Ironscheff this weekend, the six, seven kids on the team. And had a great time. I got to see pictures. I didn't get to attend, but I got to see pictures. And just the wonderful, the double A for T and I heard all about this beautiful fire that one of the other teams got to do. But just an amazing event that had a lot of people in attendance, getting to sample and try out different things and really bring a lot of the farm-to-school message to a wide variety of people. So that was a very positive thing. And I'm always going to put a flag in for Odyssey of the Mind. A big shout-out to all our four teams for Odyssey of the Mind. We had one at the elementary school, first time at the elementary school, two from here at Founders, and then one from EMS, again, first time having a team at EMS. And the kids did fabulous, and we do have one team that came in first place. And so are looking at going to Worlds, and that coach is up and coming in before meeting tonight to find out more about that. And our other teams did fabulous, just entertaining, wonderful to see what these kids have created since probably October, most of us started around October, one team started a little later. And just taking these problems, breaking them down, finding creative solutions, creating, you know, rubber band-powered little gadgets. It was just amazing. And so just very impressed with what they can do and what they continue to do. Love the program. Love the kids.
I was at STEAM Day, which was awesome at the elementary school. And just, it was a really cool, I think the kids had an absolute blast that day. And it was just really fun to see them engaging in different things and learning, I can't remember what the name of those 3D triangular shapes were, but it sounded like a dinosaur or some sort.
Trihedron.
It sounds like a dinosaur. Sounds like a dinosaur. But I think that was really cool, so I, type of thing that I hope continues because it was really fun to participate in and see the kids participating in it. So, it's good fun.
Did anybody get to go to, I did not, the arts night? Oh, yes. I heard wonderful things about it. Remember the quick firsthand account, it brings all these kids from a couple of communities together.
You're listening, you can talk about it, too.
I can speak about that as well. Yeah, it was, as usual, exceptional, again, seeing the collaboration of the three different, four different school districts and seeing all the kids come together, with Dan being, I don't know, 350 new kids or so. And, yeah, it's really neat just to see them just blend so well and the teachers work together so closely. And the other art was also quite, I mean, the non-performance art was really quite good as well, the whole of us. It's just, again, it's neat to see a community come together and not there.
Far less exciting than all of that was something I want to put out there and then we can talk about it, think about it and talk about it a little bit more at the end. I think we'll get into maybe our job responsibilities, job description, but there's a policy governance training at the end of this week. And I late sent an email to you guys. I think they've come through on some of the VSB stuff, but it's an opportunity potentially to do something together around development and policy governance, and it'll be in my career, potentially as long as 11 to 5 on this Friday. So, just put it in our heads for right now. Come back to it and just think about if there are enough of us as somewhat of a critical mass to do that work together. The second half of that from 1 to 5 is looking less at the one-on-one intro-type stuff and more at how to handle situations and share with other boards operating a clean model of governance and learn a little bit from each other. So, we can talk about it, but they're far less exciting maybe than the other great things that are in our district. No other board acknowledgements. I will take a motion for the consent agenda.
I'll move and accept the consent agenda as presented.
One second. All of those in favor? I pass it towards you. I am so excited about this meeting. And I came in very excited that our UTM would be bringing us as well because when we get to our end, it's probably the most important thing that really is why we do all this work. And to me, to hear from you guys about how our kids are doing is probably the most important set of things that we have. So, thank you guys very much. I know it's no small feat to pull it all together and to put it into context that makes sense for us, but we really appreciate it. So, I will give it to Mark and I'm sure he'll give it to you guys. And I hear that he might be working on a hook for the timeframe, but we will try and be thoughtful about our questions.
He's the word hook.
But we'll be thoughtful about our questions, but I will tell you that we'll also, you know, want to take the time necessary to make sure you've shared how our kids are doing when we have the opportunity to ask questions. So, thank you.
So, Andrew, this is our leadership team in the district. And this is the second trimester report. It's a progress report, more of a monitor report, monitoring for first month, reporting November or October. So, this is after, this is the data on that assessment window in the mid-winter. So, we're going to be sharing some growth on part of our kids. In fact, a hook will be necessary because when you listen to Wendy, Peter, and Kevin, the three building leaders, talk about the progress, it's just pretty impressive stuff. So, they're going to spend some time. Now, I'll do my best and Ellen will and Jess will as well to give them the book if they get a little carried away with the enthusiasm. It really is a chance to celebrate the growth, but also to reflect on the hard work we're doing and what do we need to do in the next, you know, 15 or so weeks to make sure we get all kids to that standard. Put together a presentation, I think you'll find engaging and illuminating in terms of sorts of things that we're working on and where we see some growth for our kids. Before we begin, I want to acknowledge that we have one member of our team who's really gone above and beyond her commitment by attending this meeting on her birth date. That would be Ellen. We're not going to sing "Happy Birthday."
Kids would then have better.
What else would I want to hear?
Apples. So, please feel free to help yourself to apples and honey.
You don't know she's been celebrating since Friday.
Well, this will definitely be the top of you.
This is the pinnacle, Ellen. So, as always, it's great to have my closest colleagues here. It is about teamwork, you know, I think this is the greatest lever that we have for systems change in the district. And once again, I think that these guys will demonstrate their prowess as leaders and their commitment to the kids, every single one of them. They'll talk about that tonight. So, I do have a copy of the presentation. Don't sneak. Who's moving these slides? Peter? I have a very small speaking role and Jessica and Ellen will chime in when points need to be accentuated. And again, this is a presentation that looks very similar to first trimester in terms of what we want to share tonight, but really it's the story we want to tell that's more important than the data that we're going to share. This slide is one you've seen before and it's just to remind the board that assessment is a nested concept, starting with the macro assessment that formally kneecaps into the SBC. We started administering the SBC last week and we've had, I think, a pretty successful rollout thanks to the SBC team, who not only did we pilot it last year, but we've got some people who are really smart about documentation. So, that's not this presentation. We're really in the next circle and that is that local assessment. We assess kids, you know, certain times of the year using common assessments across the K-8 span. And so, these guys are going to show you some of those data that relates to reading and mathematics tonight. And then, of course, the next level down is about what educators are doing in their classrooms, on their teams, around the school-based form of assessments. And then, in the nest, really the most powerful thing is what's going on with student work on a day-to-day basis. And that's not tonight either. It really is about the curriculum framework in the district. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Farama.
Okay.
And we can ask questions during. They have about 15 minutes each. And again, they're on a time hook, but I also think I'm hearing, Tim, that if we need to go a little bit further, we can go a little bit further.
So, my time doesn't start then?
Starts right now.
Okay. So, thank you. First, I want to say, Kim, really, it's not a tremendous amount of work pulling this together. This is what we're doing on a daily basis. This is just the documentation of it is really, and it doesn't take all that much time. But this is the data wall as it looked in October after our last, at our last meeting when we met. I've added some color to it. You see that the vertical yellow lines are separating proficiencies. So, over here is proficiency 1. This is 2, 3, and 4. And then, these green lines separate the, so this one here separates language arts from math in the second grade. This red line separates second grade from first grade. So, there's first grade performing at a level 2 in literacy, and this is them in math. And then, this red line separates kindergarten. This is literacy and this is math. I want to remind you again that our math assessment does not have a proficiency level 4. We were really hoping to be able to add that to it, but it's because it's a screener and because of the design of the, you really can't exceed what you should know going in. It's not designed to do that. So, what you see here is if we look at second grade, these are students in second grade who are reading at a proficiency level 1. These are children reading at proficiency level 2, proficiency 3, and proficiency 4. And remember that we use, those proficiencies are determined by the developmental reading assessment that we give. That is sort of a stake in the ground that we use to figure out where kids are at. With the teachers, what we agreed was if the child is reading at a text level that places them at a proficiency 2, you can, if you're really worried, place them at a proficiency 1, but you cannot put them at a proficiency 3. You cannot exceed what the DRA says. It's just sort of a safeguard for ourselves. So, this is the data wall as it existed in October. We just finished the shifting with all of the teachers at the grade levels, and this is what it looks like today.
Real quick question. You said that you can move from 2 to 1, but not 2 to 3. Can they move from 3 to 2? Does that hold true for all levels?
Yes, it holds true for all the levels. You cannot, even if your gut says this kid is oh, so close, you can't bump them from a 2 to a 3 or a 3 to a 4. But if your gut says, eh, I'm worried enough, you can drop down a level. So, this is our data wall as it exists today. Look at the 1s here, the 2s, the 3s, and this again is in literacy, and the 4s that we had to actually drop down and borrow some space from the math folks. This is in math, proficiency 1, 2, and 3. Language arts, this is first, this is first grade literacy at a level 1, level 2, level 3, and level 4. And math, level 1, 2, and 3. And in language arts at kindergarten, proficiency 1, 2, 3, and 4. And in math, proficiency 1, 2, and 3. This is, I want to bounce back really quickly to the first one and then forward to this one. It's huge movement. And this is particularly striking, given that this is the first year that we raised our targets for proficiency. In the past, you may remember that at kindergarten, the end proficiency for the DRA was a text level 3 or 4. We moved that to a 4 this year. In first grade, it went to, from a 16, 18 to an 18. So, we raised it at each of the levels, except for winter kindergarten, which we're still looking at. So, this, given the first year that the targets have been raised, I was concerned about how this was going to come out, but also given that we had a lot of conversation with teachers last year about the fact that we needed to raise these proficiency levels and we needed to be ready. And I told the kindergarten team last year, basically, forget 3, 4, that's, we'll change it in VCAT next year, but we need to be thinking about 4, 6. And same for the first grade. And so, we had remarkable growth from the fall to the winter. And here, some of the factors, we, after the fall assessment window, we focused, we noticed we had a large group of what I called cusp-y readers. There were kids who are almost there, but not quite at the standard. So, working with the literacy coaches and with the math, well, the literacy coaches, actually working with both literacy and math, we sort of focused on those kids and on the small group instruction that those particular children needed in order to move from almost there to there. So, we very intentionally and strategically had the literacy and the math coaches working, not only planning with the PLCs as a group, so they were helping to plan the units that they were teaching, but also then working with individual teachers within their classrooms on what is the small, if you're, if you have a group of four kids who are reading at this text level and this is the mistake that you're seeing, then here are some strategies that you can use to work with those children. And we saw incredible growth and movement with those kids. And the idea being, and we've talked as a staff about this, that we want to, so now we know really what to do with that small group of kids. Let's look at this other group of kids who are just slightly below that. And the idea being that we're really looking to expand the teacher's ability, their capacity to identify what the issues are that are standing in its ways and address them because they're getting, they're getting the instruction from the coaches. So, very focused on small group instruction, on planning, modeling, and observing, and giving feedback to teachers. The expectation for classroom instructional change that comes with the Common Core has been stressed. The PLCs are, they are working at, they're really functioning at this point at a really high level. They are planning their units together with the coaches. They're planning their common formative assessments, which they're giving periodically so that they know how to adjust, what they need to adjust because three of the kids didn't really get what we were doing the other day. And they know who those kids are and they know what they need to get to those children, what are the strategies needed. And it's very exciting because this is, this is the first time that I have seen that formative assess, the whole assessment model is weaving together really nicely. It's not, there's the district window and then there's what we do. It is what we do and it ties directly into the assessment window from the district level. And it makes sense to teachers and they're really, they're really digging into the data and they're working with coaches to figure it out. We're using team strategy plans as part of our multi-tiered support system. So, when a teacher is really stumped by a child, they go to, they turn to their colleagues and they say, here's what I'm seeing, and together they work out a plan because they all have that same type of child in their room who's having that same struggle and one of them probably knows the solution. And then, when they go through that process, they set goals, they have progress monitoring plans about how we're going to know whether they made, whether they're making it or not. And if they don't, then we move to our MTSS, again, the Multi-Tierred Systems of Support, where we have our Title 1 folks and some of our special educators who can deliver more intensive focus. Student Support Team is working in along the same model in terms of using data to look at kids who are really struggling social-emotional regulation and then looking at the services that we're delivering. Are the services making a difference? Do we need to look for more support or services from outside? We have had, we've had really good success with identifying kids who are really, really struggling, what the supports we're providing them, what they are not getting, and then working with parents and working with Howard Center and social workers in order to get services for kids. So, we're seeing improvement in our student data for the Student Support Team as well. This is, this is the numeric equivalent of that data wall. So, if you look, here is reading in the fall. The red is second grade, the blue is first grade. And remember, we don't give the DRA to kindergarten. So, and these are the proficiency levels. And remember, again, this year, they were, these were, these targets were raised. So, in reading in the fall, we had 56 children in second grade reading at a proficiency 4. We boosted that to 76 in the winter. We had 70 children in first grade to 75, and then in the winter, we got 82. We went text level, I mean, at a proficiency 3, 25 to 28, 18 to 32, and 15, 36 to 19. These are the numbers you want to see dropping, 36 to 9, and 26 to 15. And then, this, 0 and 8. These are the kids, what I think really what has happened is by raising those target levels, it has enabled us to really focus, and moving those kids who are almost there, it's really enabled us to go, these are the kids who are really struggling. These are the children that we really need to start focusing some of our intervention strategies on. And every one of those children is either, is on a plan of some sort right now, as are most of these children as well. And then, we're seeing the same thing in math, increases in proficiencies and decreases for kids who are not, except for here, at first grade. So, really what we're seeing is just a remarkable growth. And in past years, the winter assessment window is the one that always frightened me because the 3, 4, coming out of kindergarten, reading at a 3, 4, I knew that those kids who are reading at the text level 3, I knew based on looking back through several years of data, that if you came out reading at a text level 3, you were going to be struggling in the winter of your first grade year. So, I think what we did effectively is we identified those children last year and carried through into this year with interventions and strategies and the use of the coaches to move them. This is our data from our student risk survey. You see here, the green represents high risk, the red is moderate risk, and the blue is low risk. And you can see that there was a decline in each of these areas and an increase in this area. And I think when you, when you see the term "high risk," don't panic. We're talking about kindergartners who, some of whom have never been in large public settings before, and they're just trying to figure out how to be around a large group of people.
I refer to my, in case you'd like to spend time, Peter.
Yes. They're my buds. They're my pals. It's my lunch group. So, really what we're seeing across the board are incredible gains. I think I give tremendous kudos to the teaching staff at the elementary school who have focused incredibly intently on how to help these children move. They have availed themselves of the coaches and the expertise of the coaches. If you look at their schedules, I put out a newsletter every Sunday and to the staff, and I include in there the coaches' schedules and their planning with this teacher and that are in this teacher's room, and then they're at the PLC with this group, both math and literacy coaches. So, they have really, the staff has really taken the challenge and we're seeing, I'm just, I'm thrilled with the results.
Thanks, Peter. Thanks for staying almost within 15. Lot to share.
Okay, so, Peter and I, so I'm the principal at Founders, grade 3, 4, and 5. So, Peter and I are sort of in different places with our data wall work. This is really our staff's first year really interacting with the data wall. And this data wall is the first, a picture of the first time teachers have played an active role in it. So, I don't have a picture of October, but I am going to talk about the data from October and how that's changed over the last several months. This data wall represents teachers placing kids on the wall. So, lots of things are taken into account with this data wall, formative assessments as well as substantive assessments. So, the screener, the math screener is taken into account here, but teachers had a planning sheet, they came to a 45-minute meeting, ready to talk about every single kid, and where they saw students performing 1s, 2s, 3s, and 4s. So, that's, this is just a picture. I'm going to talk a little bit more about the data as we get to another screen. I'm not going to repeat a lot of what Peter said, but a lot of what Peter said, we are right in, right in there with him. So, the MTSS, Multi-Tierred Systems of Supports, the team strategy plan work, educational support plans in place. And we'll talk a little bit more about the data, though. So, stay with me. This is a picture of a grade 4 lesson study that was going on with Hillary Kissel, our ELA coach. You'll see a pair of educators in the picture, classroom teachers, and what you can't see is there's probably 10 adults in there observing one lesson. So, they're all taking notes, they're meeting in their PLC teams afterwards, talking about the lesson, student responses, as well as the work that came as a result of the lesson. They're creating formative assessments together. A lot of what Peter said, I'm going to ditto, is there's a lot of professional learning community work happening where teachers are creating formative assessments together, looking at the data, making adjustments in their instruction and moving forward. So, showing some, this was a performance task work that they were working on. So, they're videotaping the lessons, they're re-watching them later on. We have them available for other teachers to also watch and talk about. This is just a fun slide that, this is, I think, a big part of why we're seeing a lot of progress this year with our kiddos is there's just a big push for grit and determination, you know, making sure that we're working with kids and working hard and sticking with those problems and just that tenacity and spontaneity spirit. They're, they're doing some great work. We're doing a lot of professional readings around grit. A full day of learning in August was focused on the area of grit and perseverance. So, teachers are setting SMART goals, teams are setting SMART goals. Do you remember what SMART goals are?
I do. Oh.
Do you remember, Peter?
Kevin wants to answer.
Kevin wants to answer.
I think I still have it in the slide.
I'll spell onomatopoeia.
Smart.
Strategic.
Specific. Measurable. Attainable.
Timely.
Well, we skipped R.
Oh.
So R, I have four Rs, relevance, rigor, and results-oriented. So before I talk about the data, some of this is going to be a bit redundant. We're working with coaches on lesson study, we're planning units together, we're analyzing the results, and we're adjusting instruction based on what students are showing us. Again, teachers are, teams are setting individual SMART goals. So we think about the teacher growth model that we rolled out this year. That's playing a pretty major role in student progress because teachers are really targeting specific groups of kids, in some cases only one student, but that focus on that one student is then impacting their instruction with all kids in the classroom. So there's a lot of, a lot of work going into SMART goals, which they're really, they're timely, they are really specific, and we're checking in on those goals. Lots of times, goals are set, but we don't, we don't look into the, look at, look at them again until the end of the school year. This is, these are goals that are set and monitored throughout time. Excellent first instruction with classroom teachers. We have a tier two math instruction with our math lab in the morning and Title I math instruction. And just some really strong collaboration with special educators and teaching assistants along with classroom teachers. So there's a lot of collaborating happening. Involvement of classroom teachers and special educators, as I said, in the data wall discussions, our team strategy plans and EST plans with really clear goals. Again, putting a student on a plan isn't enough. We've got to have clear goals in those plans as well as how we're going to progress monitor and what those timelines are. Ditto to Peter, our student support team is monitoring those social-emotional needs across the school. We're supporting students, families, and teachers in a lot of different ways. Communication, collaboration with our student management specialists in all three buildings along with guidance and our leadership. There's just really strong teamwork across buildings as well as our student management specialists and counselors working with bus drivers to try to decrease some of that bus behavior. That's an ongoing, I rode the bus today. My own vision of what's happening on the buses. So some of the same things, you know, we're all working on the same things, but just in maybe different places. So our, we don't give all students the DRA, so let's talk a little bit about reading. So I'm going to fly through some data here. So the, how does this work? Ah, there we go. Okay. So all students are given a screener in the fall, okay? From grade three, four, and five, all of our students, roughly 400 students. So in each grade, there are a number of students that are sort of flagged based on that screener. And we give those students the, an additional assessment, the developmental reading assessment, the DRA. So these numbers, these reading numbers reflect those kids that were sort of, that were in our radar based on that screening, okay? So I'm going to, I'm not going to point. You want to point? Okay, so in grade three, grade three is red. There were 31 students, okay, that received twos or ones on the DRA. 37 of those students received threes or fours on the DRA. So our targeted kiddos are those, the 22 and the nine red. These are our target kiddos. Our 31 kiddos, okay? For fifth grade, 35 of our kiddos, fourth grade, rather, 35 of our kiddos got a three or four on the DRA after that additional assessment. 14 got twos and 16 were ones. For our fifth grade, 48 of those students that were flagged from the screener received threes or fours, and 14 of them received twos and eight received ones. So of those students in third grade, two of those students were English language learners, eight of those students were on IEP plans or are on IEP plans, and seven of those students are now on educational support team plans. So they're getting additional support since October. So the progress, 11 of those.
Just quick question. So these are the ones who took the DRA?
Took the DRA, not all our kids take the DRA.
Roughly speaking, about 90 kids in each class that didn't take. Real, real wrong.
Right, yeah, yeah. So, you know, the gates is a way for us to just sort of pinpoint who those kids might, we might want to look at a little more closely. And a lot of those kids, all of these kids right here, after giving the DRA, they were doing good, they were doing fine. So these are the kids we're watching here. So let's see, progress, 11 of our 31 students are now reading at, these 31 students, 11 of those are now reading at or above grade level. We had one student improve from a one to a three, which was awesome improvement. We had five students go from a two to a four, which is really cool. Four students went from one to two, five students improved from a two to a three. Only one student showed regression, and this is a student that we're looking at really closely for a possible evaluation. So we're seeing some really good gains there in third grade. In fourth grade, so this takes into account some new students as well. We had three students went from a one to a two, so you'll see the numbers here. We have 13 students who are still below grade level that are twos, and we have 13 students who are at the one level. We have a high number of students on IEPs in fourth grade. Let's see. 15 students are on IEPs. 15 of these students, this 13, these 26 kids here, 15 of them are on IEPs, so receiving some sort of specialized instruction for math. And five of those students are now on EST plans as well. All of the students that we're looking at in this column, these kids here and these kids here are on some sort of plan similar to what Peter was saying. They might be on a team strategy plan where teachers are working in the classroom with them to provide additional support, or they're on an educational support plan, or they're on an IEP plan. No students showed regression in fourth grade and no students showed regression in fifth grade. Of the students performing significantly below grade level, our kids who are in the ones, 11 of those students are on IEPs. So we have a lot of struggling students on individual education plans, but what that tells me is we need to do more for those kiddos that are on IEPs. What can, even though I think sometimes we get a little complacent because students, oh, they're on an IEP, they should be performing low. No, we need to raise the bar for those kiddos and really look at the supports and services that they're getting and, and move them up the scale as well. So that's what I'm thinking as I look at that data, and that's something that we see across, correct me if I'm wrong, Jessica, we see that across, you know, a lot of schools and statewide and nationwide where that particular group of kiddos, we're not seeing the trajectory we want to see in their learning. So we've got to do something about that. Let's see, the math, this math fall scores are based on the screener, as I said in, in the first slide, based on only one number where we couldn't, kids could not receive fours, so these numbers are only based on threes, score of three. So this is third grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade. One score, one point in time, one screener. These scores over here in the winter are based on a lot of different data points. Teacher judgment based on unit assessments, classroom work, the screener.
That's your data wall?
That's our data. Did I lose my pointer? The pointer died. Yes, math winter is data wall. So you'll notice in the ones especially, you're going to see the numbers a little bit different. So look at fifth grade, we have 25 students performing at a one proficiency level according to teacher judgment. So in looking at some of those scores, I think, you fixed it?
No, not really.
So I want to talk about what we're doing for some of those kiddos that are performing in the ones and the twos. We, so in grade three, 10 of those students are receiving Title I math services. Six of those students were invited to math labs, so teachers ranked their kiddos, high concern, medium concern, low concern. So some of those kiddos that are twos, teachers are feeling like, I got this, you know, they're going to, they're going to be fine by the end of the year, but they don't need additional supports and services, I can meet their needs at the tier one level in the classroom. So other kids were invited to the math lab or Title I supports. In third grade, we had 10 in Title I have six receiving math lab supports in the morning, and four of those students are on educational support plans for math, and three of those kiddos are being evaluated for a possible math disability. These are kiddos who have been in Title I for three years, year after year, or they've been in math lab, and so that's the kind of discussion that was happening at the data wall meetings is, well, let's talk about this kiddo, has, you know, has this student been in, been receiving additional services in math through Title I or the math lab? Yep, third grade, yep, fourth grade, fifth grade, fifth grade, still struggling. We need to figure this out and try to get this kiddo untangled. So those are the kinds of discussions that we had at that data wall meeting, and we made some decisions to move forward with some math, possible math evaluations for those kiddos. In fifth grade, we had, a fourth grade, we have 14 of those students are on IEPs, five of them are on EST plans, 10 were invited to math lab, and 11 are in, receiving Title I. With fifth grade, we have 17 of those students are on IEPs, seven were invited to math lab, and two students are on EST plans. So all of those kiddos that are below, meaning expectations in math are getting some sort of support, whether it's at the tier one level by the classroom teacher and support in the classroom, or through math lab or Title I. I still feel like we're not getting all of those needs met, for sure. You know, I don't want to see 25 kids at the fifth grade level in, in a teacher's mind receiving ones. So we still have a lot more work to do there to figure out how to meet those needs and get those, get those numbers up.
So it's like you just, go ahead. So what kids are not on those lists? There's some.
Those are all kids who are grade level or above on the reading.
On the, on the math?
All kids.
All kids.
Why, there's a significant change in number from fall to winter?
Some kids, some of those students, our students with significant needs aren't, aren't necessarily included in, in that math winter.
Okay.
They took the screener, but they might fall outside of what was happening.
Or they didn't take the screener, our kids who have significantly higher needs. They didn't.
I think, I think what you're getting at the end is that in the winter, they took more than just the screener into account to get the, to put the kids on the wall. So the, so the first, in the fall, you did it off one point at time. And then in the winter, they, she brought all the teachers in with their work samples and with their pieces. So it, they could have been a three in the beginning, but because of the way they were working in the classroom, they ended up being a two.
There's 19 more fifth graders in the fall than in the winter than in the fall.
You do math really well.
113 versus 96.
And then the grade class is still bigger than that.
So that, I always.
So there's a bunch of kids not accounted for. So that's why I was wondering what, like in the math, the ones who, the ones who, those were only, reading was only the ones who took the DRE. So I was assuming math.
Yeah.
Only the ones who fit certain category and a bunch didn't.
That's a really good question. I hadn't noticed that they were that different. I, I just.
I haven't seen, we can look, but I know just in special ed that we've had a lot of kids move in.
We've had a lot of move-ins.
So, so the number dropped by 16. We thought those moving in, the number dropped by 13. So there's a bunch missing from the winter.
In fifth grade?
Yeah, but you do the rest, 113 to 96.
The red is third grade. So we had several kids in third grade not, that were pretty high, high significant needs that did not get assessed. Right, they're not, they were not included in the wall. They were assessed through special ed, but they were not included in the wall.
Yeah, we'll go back and take a look at that.
Yeah, yeah.
I thought that was a math test.
No, I just think of, point that when the budget was being developed, you know, one of the things that we, we reinvested some resources into having a title, having a literacy specialist and a math specialist. Founders has been weak in that tier two line, and those decisions that you made were based on the data that we've been watching over the last few years. There's a, there's a, it's lean in that department here in this, in this school.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we definitely have a lot of work to do. We're not there yet. When you look at the, the student risk screener, you can, there's not much of a change, but the whole school, our high risk in the fall was 7%, and in the winter it's 8%. Again, we've had some move-ins and some move-outs as well. There's been a little bit of a fluctuation there, especially at the fifth grade level. And our moderate risk was, let's see, 17 in the fall and is now 15. And then our low risk was 76 in the fall and up a little bit, 77%. So very slim, similar, there's not a lot of change there, but a lot of supports going into whole class as well as working with individual kiddos in small groups with Kelly Monin-Smith, David Hoppe, our school counselors, as well as Joel Rico, our student management specialist. So the four of us are working really closely to monitor this data, the referral data, and support teachers and kids and families. So seeing some nice improvements there as well.
So I chose. I chose not to put a data wall up there, but instead I chose to put our new reporting out for parents and for students, Jump Rope, which is a standard-based way of, of reporting out. So this is a good example, although it's hard to read from here, but this is a young lady actually, on the Journey team, so in sixth grade. Her overall math achievement at this point is a 3.5, but when you look at this as a teacher and as a student, you notice that everything looks really good except when you get down here. So as a teacher, what they're able to do now is they're able to pinpoint what it is, what standards they need to go back and address. Or what's even better is this little kiddo right here can, can, can ask the question, what do I need to do differently to score a four? What do I need to do on top of? What can I do? And, and that's just been a real shift in our thinking as a school and probably as parents as well, as we move further and further along. So EMS, I can also split it up into social behavioral and then academic for this past half of the school year, two-thirds of the school year. For social behavioral, what we've done is we've taken our SRS data, that, those bar graphs that you see from Wendy and from, and Peter, and we, we looked at the high need kids, those, what were they, the?
High risk.
High-risk students. And, and the ones that were in the yellow, the moderate ones. And what we did was we ended up creating six social skills groups for those kids, really pinpointing exactly what kind of skill set that they needed. You know, we look at kids, and we don't think that kids purposely activate to behave, but rather they're lagging the skills that it takes to behave in a particular way, in a particular space. So in the area of school, what skills do they need in order to be more successful? And so these, these six social skills groups, which are being run by our guidance, also by Chris Dumichel, who's our SMS, our student management specialist, Caitlin Plant, who's our social worker from Howard Center, and we also have a great partner with the Community Justice Center, and they come in and we do some work with them. Also this year, and Wendy and Peter, I think both, both hint on it, is the bus drivers were working with them, the school day begins with them. And we noticed that when the kids come in with a positive attitude on a nice, healthy bus ride, we reap the benefits. The other thing that's happened this year is we're, we've started up what is called the World of Difference, A W O D. And it's a group of 25 peer leaders, seventh and eighth with a handful of sixth graders sprinkled in to, really, it has changed the, the climate of the building. It really has. These guys are, they're true leaders. They, these guys are, they're true leaders. Uh, they've been trained, a few days of workshops, they've gone around to every seventh grade and sixth grade homeroom and did a nice training with all those kids, and it really has transformed the, the climate within the building, and, and it's just been tremendous. Another thing that's been helpful in our social behavioral end is the developmental design, which is just, uh, it's the, the middle school version of responsive classroom. So what's happening K through, or pre-K, I, I don't, I shouldn't speak for pre-K, but what's happening at least for K through five is responsive classroom, that there's morning meetings, that there's a particular climate, there's a particular culture that's happened within a, within a building, and within the classroom to create these communities, and that's just extending all the way up through to the middle school. And it's really been amazing to watch the teachers take ownership of their kids, and the kids taking ownership of each other in their behaviors. It's been great. Academics, some of the things that these guys have talked about already. Uh, PLCs this year, I think with the, looking at the data, and also with the, with the jump rope and looking at standards for, really for the one, really a strong focus of ours this year, our lessons are much more clear, and they're much more focused, and the, and the assessments, in the second bullet here, have been much more clear about what's being asked of students. Uh, and they're able to use those, that is, assessments to provide interventions for kids. Uh, also with the other two schools, we're using our team strategy plans, we're getting those clear goals, clear targets, and, and then I meet with the teams real quickly around the winter data, and what's, and we ask the questions, what is specific, what is a specific need, and what are we doing to address that need when we're talking about kids? And then Hillary and Betsy, they work closely with individual teachers this year, at the middle school, getting into classrooms, doing some observations, as well as working at the PLC level, providing some PD. And here's our data at the middle school. Uh, Dan, I hope my addition is somewhat closer. We do have kids move in and out constantly, but you have sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. The, again, same as Peter and Wendy, we don't have a third, or a fourth distinguished in math in our screener. And the same thing with Wendy, is that these students who receive a three on the fall do not get reassessed in the winter. So the ones that are getting reassessed are the, are the kids that are down here. So in, in, in eighth grade, there were ten students that received a one, and then in the winter screening, there were seven, five and five. I can tell you that these kids right here are all IEP students. Uh, and that's not an excuse, it's where they're at right now, and now it's our, it's our job to continue to build them up. Uh, but you can see the, the numbers are looking pretty good as you go up through. Pretty good. Math, these are all of our students take the math screener in the fall, all of our students take the math screener in the winter. Uh, this is a brand-new assessment for us. This is the first year that we've actually had a math fall and winter screener. Uh, so I'll be curious to see, I know that after the fall, there was a great deal of discussion in the PLCs about what are we asking the kids to do, and are these the right questions? So when you see sixty, sixty, uh, sixth graders, that's, that's almost half, probably forty percent of the kids, it's, the question was, is this the right test? Are we asking the right questions? But what came out from the next assessment after doing some intervention work, by doing some clear focus lessons, you can see there was definitely some growth along the way.
So I just wanna clarify, the, the reading, not everybody's speaking the system, but those that are potentially at risk for challenge-
Right, so what-
And on the math, all kids.
Yep.
So that, those numbers represent-
Yep. So what you see here is you see, we, we do what is called the Fontes and Fennel, which is in, what, in, no, we don't.
Fontes and Fennel. Keep going, you gotta tell me a little more.
Well, no, that's our, we're, we're going with our fifth, Staini.
No.
Oh.
Gates.
I'm sorry, the gates. Well, the reason I'm saying is because I think Ellen and I were in a meeting today talking about-
Talking about Fontes and Fennel.
Anyways, no. Uh, we do the gates, and in the gates, if the students are, and we actually raised the bar this year, if the students are, fifth, Staini are below, five, four, three, two, one, then we give them the DRA for more information. That's what you see here. So all those kids there are all five, four, three, two, ones.
Can I jump in a little bit?
Yep.
Only because the same, the phenomenon happened with Wendy's kids, too. The, in our local assessment plan, it's four and below is when you're considered a two. Okay, you're, you're lower than. And five in the gates has always been, you know, right on, like you're right on, you're a three. What we did was we raised the window to include the fives, the kids who are right on the mark, to have that DRA assessment, and what we found out was exactly what we probably could have told you, was that some kids in that five category were really threes and fours, and some kids in that five category were really twos and ones. So by expanding that window, we actually grabbed more kids who needed it, and we double-checked on a few kids. And so if the kids in the fall were, came up a three or a four, then we didn't continue to do the DRA in the winter with them, because they had shown us in a heavier-duty assessment that they could do the work. So, and Wendy's grade level, the exact same thing happened. The fives really did, the fives were up and down.
So they were all the fives.
So it was, it's really, it was good, because the teachers weren't real happy having to do more, but it actually, they saw the, the difference, too. So I thought it was good.
So, and then those students that, in the fall, when you did do that screener, and they were five, four, three, twos and ones, when we gave them the DRA, this is where they landed.
Yep.
So we didn't need to, in theory, they, they scored a three in the fall, so you don't need to do the winter screener.
So your numbers are getting smaller.
Right, so they should be getting smaller as they go. Yeah, so this next, this next block should be even smaller.
Yeah.
You should be looking at these guys. Okay? Uh, and then, yes, those are all of our students. And then this, although we try to get a hundred and twenty percent of our population to, to do the right thing. Dan, that might be a question for you, but we aren't quite there yet. But, so in terms of this, you're, you see, this bar doesn't look quite as big, but it's just skewed. Actually, this is eighty-nine, and that's ninety-two percent of our students, so right now, looking like-
Just in case we were-
What happened there?
Yeah.
That's right, I should have left it just a-
And he could be better.
That's Kevin saying to Eric, I can do it myself.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly what it says, is, is I asked Eric Martinson, who left her right brain on Ellen, I'm not sure which one.
Pass doesn't do mine.
He, I asked him to come over and do this for me, and then as soon as he came over, he said, oh, I think I got it. Oh, apparently, I didn't. Yeah, so, thank you. So, questions one may have.
I'm gonna go back and look at those numbers. I'm not sure why they're so skewed. I'm gonna double-check.
Was it in the math?
It should have been the same, other than-
Yeah, got it.
Great five is pretty much two kids.
Well, I have to say, it just reinforces, you know-
I, what you've been special of the math team leader, because when you look at what happened in middle school, in terms of those sixth graders, and the movement you saw, and just think if they had come in that much higher, because the, you know, scene at Founders, where there was signs of regression, and really knowing that if we're putting the money for targeting those kids more, if we get them up at enough, a higher level, able to move them along in the school, then when they get to the middle school, how much farther we can potentially take them, which is, I just think fabulous.
I wanna, just off of what Peter had said earlier, this is very anecdotal, but you, all throughout the year, you hear presentations, and every presentation you hear, the, the PLC comes up, and, you know, we've gotten really clear over the last few years on what it is that we're teaching, we've gotten really clear on how do we know kids got there, and we're getting clear, as you heard tonight, on what do we do when the kids are not there or if they're exceeding the standards. And that, you know, the work that we're doing in that regard, I think, has just been the greatest, the greatest thing that has allowed us to, the greatest assets allowed us to achieve, the greatest that we're achieving. And what they don't talk about is they know every single one of those kids that we, that we saw. Those little cards represent kids, and even though there's schools of over four-hundred children, you know your kids very well. And I think that teachers have gotten really smarter about not just taking data, but really understanding the story behind it. So we have a long way to go, but I think the PLC framework is one which is just continuing to prove itself as being a really important asset to the district. We are ushering in nine new teacher leaders who will facilitate the PLC process in all three buildings. We're saying goodbye and thank you to, to eleven or twelve that really started this with us three years ago. And this next round of PLC teacher leaders are enthusiastic, excited, we've spent two days so far, we'll have a third day in May, working as a region with our sister districts around really getting better at how to do this work. So PLC piece, increasing our capacity with teacher leadership, has really been just an amazing thing to watch. It's not, people aren't feeling like we're forcing this on them, like they may have felt a couple of years ago, when we had to align our local curriculum with new state standards. That heavy lifting is done, and now we get to the business of the fun part of our job, and that's figuring out, you know, the possibility exists where we're serving some new kids. So the job work, it's all been just been done.
One question I, I have, you know, we look really at, at how we're getting the cusp-y kids up, and, and, you know, seeing that great movement, I mean, it's fantastic, I'm very excited. Not much talk about, what are that, what about that kid's a four in kindergarten? What about the kids already a four? What do we do to, you know, and I, I know a few things that, that our school district can do, but I'd just be curious, just to hear your whole thoughts on, on the kids that are, wow, really excel in, wanna make sure we're, we're pushing them further. Uh, I know we have a, a kindergartner who is, I think he's reading a DRA level eighteen in the winter, and he is, that child is paired with a couple of different second graders who come in as reading buddies, to, so that he has somebody that he can read with. But that, it's, it is not the systemic approach that we're taking with those other kids. It's more of a sort of, oh, my gosh, what are we gonna do here, kinda thing. I think that's, that's an area that we need to put more work into, but I think the results that we're seeing now, when I, when I talk with teachers about bringing those coaches in and, and widening your capacity, you know, broadening your capacity to handle the tier one instruction in your classroom, I, I unconsciously do it this way, as opposed to doing it this way. But that's really what we need to do, we need to expand it in both directions. It's just been, the, the intense pressure has not been at the other end at this point.
Yeah, my, 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 they're fours, okay.
No, no. I think that we're, we're seeing a lot of that happening at the tier one level, with all of this work that we're doing with coaches and our PLC work. We are taking those kids into consideration when we're having those conversations during lesson study and during our PLCs. We're, we're lumping them all together, you know? I know teachers are doing formative assessments to see either before units begin, or as units, they're working on units, and they're always adjusting their instruction, and there's lots of trading of kids, and a lot of movement amongst teams. So I think a lot of that work is just happening organically, but we're also thinking of some ideas, I know I'm thinking of some ideas for next year in terms of school-wide systems, things that we can do to really address those kiddos at that.
I'm gonna just add on a little bit before Ellen chimes in. I see her hand up. You know, she's lived this long, she'll wait a few extra minutes. So, go on, it's your birthday. Go for it. No, I would hate to.
She's not wearing purple.
We're probably cutting this conversation.
A couple of things I just wanted to say, and it really echoes, I think, what these guys are saying, but one is, the work with the coaches isn't about, necessarily about cusp-y kids. So we keep saying, working with coaching, working with coaches, it's really about designing phenomenal lessons that target all over the place. And, and the, the work that, what I've seen, certainly in the middle school, and I'm sure over here, is that when the teachers are getting together and they're collaborating and they're creating these assessments, they're providing opportunities for there to be extensions of thinking, and extensions of learning, and extension, and being able to show really what you know. And just, it's been amazing work with that. And then individualized, and we have kids in the seventh grade who've just finished geometry. So there's an email I sent tonight to the math PLC, which was, what are we gonna do now? So there's those individuals as well. Ellen?
So what I was going to say, piggybacks on what Kevin said, is that the construct of the Common Core standards and the next-gen science standards is very different. So they are, they contain larger concepts, which actually, this whole, when Wendy led with the grit and perseverance, this whole idea that you have to dig in deeper, and your knowledge base is stronger. So teachers are doing more open-ended questions, which allows kids to show what they know in a broader range versus a yes-or-no answer kinda thing. So the tasks they're doing are different. We don't have the four information in math, because we're creating performance tasks right now, which are more applied knowledge, which is what the Common Core asks us to do, and so you'll see more evidence of that next year. But this year, we, the teachers decided, we all decided, that this would be the draft year. So they're giving the assessments in ELA in math and in science, but we didn't, we didn't feed them into VCAT at this point, so we wanna make sure they're asking the right questions and those kinds of things as well. So you'll have more texture, so to speak, in next year's data sets, because the summer work we do, we'll be going back to the sixth grade math screener, and we already know we need to look at the questions in that screener, because the numbers were, they were off, so we have to figure out if that's the right one. We're going back into the ELA performance tasks to make sure they're the right ones, too. But all of that is what the coaches are doing with them. It's this idea of, what's the knowledge you're trying to teach the kids, and how are they gonna wanna show it to you, no matter where they are? You know, so I think there's a lot of conversation in all of the-
As we've opened our doors horizontally and vertically in the district in the last few years, and teams, there's the teachers working with each other, supporting each other in the practice, it has been identified by educators that we sometimes make too many assumptions that teachers know how to be able to differentiate instruction to meet the needs of kids who are more highly able. So I think we've talked, started to talk, now that we've gotten through that heavy lifting part of sort of the work, or that align the curriculum, develop the assessments, now we need to start maybe investing our thinking around professional development, how do I differentiate when I might have six different kids who read at different levels? It's not about sending them down the hall, which I think is not the systemic approach, or to, or to give them more homework, or to, you know, it's about where, what does good first instruction look like? And I think there was a district, we have to relook at, how do we provide that support through good professional development? And I think we're ready for that. We can get through this big chuckle work the last few years, but that might be the next, the next step.
The piece that, oh, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, and a lot of the work that we're doing with MTSS is really, so all means all. So, you know, I think sometimes the concept of differentiation is like, here's my lesson, and then here's where my kids are, so I'm gonna differentiate up and down for each kid, and instead, using the coaches and that first instruction, like, how do I design my lesson initially to reach all learners in my classroom? And that's really a very different way to look at it.
Proactive versus reactive.
Yeah, so, and then shifting to the concept-based, it's really, once you make that shift, it's a lot easier to think that way, because if you say, okay, well, we're teaching the concept of perseverance in history, let's say, or social studies. So you look at, so who are different, like heroes that persevered, or people that persevered through difficult challenges? And you can find information, people, reading levels at all different levels, or produce, you know, your final project or outcome in a variety of different ways. But if you say, like, we're studying Paul Revere, and then differentiate up and down, it's really different. So, um, so I mean, that's a long process to get, because you have shifting, but then it's also, um, with the Common Core, you're sort of aligning all these things together to get to that point. But they have all those pieces right now, looking at data, so who are my kids? What do they know? Good first instruction, we're, you know, embedding PD, so it's all there, it's just making that happen.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please stay.
As much as we love all the other things you do on the board-
I don't know why, but it's Ellen's birthday.
You all going out now?
No, I'm going home.
You guys are-
No.
So I'm giving this to Patty?
Patty, or Karen.
Did you give Mark that?
Hi, everybody. Good night.
Wait a second, USB right here.
That's not mine?
No, that goes in the-
It goes in the-
Yep, in the back.
I am blown away.
Thank you.
So it's attention on every kid. I just, I, I love the opportunity to see it in action, the attention on every kid.
So true.
And the capacity being built in our- And the capacity being those in our classroom teachers. And I think we all have the opportunity to experience with our own kids, these great teachers. But constantly attention to working together to improve their practice on behalf of kids.
Have fun, everybody.
Thank you.
Stay here.
Big takeaway, you know, to watch this. And I think, as you did, Rachel, about the strategic investment in developing their capacity. I feel so strongly about the work that you do and bringing the subject that meets that plan.
Yeah, what's really great about, it's just fun as a superintendent because, you know, three years ago, four years ago, you know, the focus of our discussion, the leadership, we meet every week, you know, for two and a half hours. And the, the agenda is primarily just focused on what we talked about tonight. And we, we deal with sort of the mechanics of the work and the stuff you got to deal with. But the excitement, you can hear it in their voices, is the growth that we're seeing in the kids. And that's, that's the narrative. I mean, that's, that's what we focus on, our energy. It's, it's very, very rewarding to hear them talk, even though they're a little different levels of ability to explain what's going on in their buildings. And I can tell you who's still around, they're focusing on that stuff.
Felt like real educational leadership and that's what you hope your building principles provide.
You heard a similar sort of message, which is good to hear.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's nice to see some continuity, there's a certain amount of continuity across the district. Everyone's pretty bold here. They want, it is interesting and not necessarily a greater of bad interesting, but it's interesting to see how they use their data walls, how they construct their data walls a little differently. And there's obviously not a just cotton drive, this is how it's supposed to be done. Those three principles are very creative in there.
And Kevin did, he whipped through it pretty quickly. He uses the data wall as well. They're not at the level of sophistication for middle school because they're very content-oriented in middle school. They teach subjects, you know, K-5, they're generalists. And so the conversations are more rich because they've got, the group teacher, they're doing everything, the content. And the data wall, data wall doesn't have as much utility. They're more on team. Hence, the Jumper was a big asset. It's not just a reporting tool, it's a planning tool. The USY wanted to showcase that tonight.
Yeah, who has access? There's a client's access to the Jumper. I mean, is it the teachers who look at it?
You have access to it.
Parents do?
Oh, yeah. Okay, so it's open. You can look at work real time, any day of the week, anytime of the day.
And is that in place of report cards?
It's, it's, the VCAT report card is a point in time. It's a composite score, three times a year. This just gives you more information under the hood. So we could still do that. We elected not to send the VCAT card home because it really didn't tell you anything.
Yeah.
That's a little bit of a growing pain that we're going through. I'll be with, I'll meet you with a parent tomorrow about why do we have letter grades?
Yeah.
So we're in the middle of that shift. But I can tell you the teachers and students, and I think a lot of parents that have taken the time to chime in, see it's much more power and, you know, being able to be more specific with where my kid is. What does being a good math student mean? Jumper really lays that out.
It's like an ongoing report card.
It's ongoing.
Yeah.
And they're real performance tests. We've moved away from summative assessments. Did you get it right on the test?
Right.
How do you show your knowledge to transfer? And that's, so our system's becoming more, becoming more rich.
And does that follow through to high school?
That's, yeah, that's. It's bubbling up, yeah, 2017.
Oh, that they're going to?
Yeah, it's an enormous shift that high school will have to make.
I think as a parent of an eighth grader, I think it's been a different cult challenge and kids understanding sort of what value it's bringing to it and parents understanding how you can be brought to it. And especially in the transition back to the.
That's what I was asking.
I know.
You know, I think there's a point in which you need to decide that you're going to do it. And I think for these kids who are sort of caught in the transition, especially sounding public for kids and families.
Right.
So interesting, this is not at all dismissing the importance of the RED committee taking a look at VCAT performance data and are our kids ready for ninth grade? ADL appeared to EMS. And the presentation we'll do on the 31st, we want to make, do a more holistic presentation in terms of our, how do you define readiness? And you know, you have been working for years, it's not kneecap stores. And so how do we, how do we orient the RED committee around this notion of, you know, what are the answers that you expect for your students? And how do you know they've got there? And it's, it's a variety of ways that you do that. So I'm loathe to just bring a kneecap data because I think that's telling the wrong, the wrong story, you can hear in Essentia anyway. So if they help me shape that, something that come across to be, I don't come across to be cavalier. You know, I mean, that's the work you've been doing.
Yeah, there's a lot.
It's that, it's this.
And that really delivers to give investment and building capacity in the whole system. And it's so focused on what kids need and not about the silos that they're operating in in their buildings. It's, it's so refreshing. It's not new for us. It's grown though and really developed into such a cultural, the way the work is happening.
Maybe we should bring a panel of teachers into the board and just talk about, you know, the genesis of PLC, where they come in the last three years. I mean, just to hear their story.
That would be very interesting.
The thing I think that is so powerful in that is the equity concept. So we, I think, enjoy tremendous opportunity for our kids in our district in sort of offering them rich offerings and doing the planning that our teachers have done around Common Core and being really responsive to, not reactive, but responsive to what's happening with kids in the community. But I also view PLCs as an opportunity for equity for kids. So it feels less to me about, oh, I better get that teacher. If I don't get that teacher, my kid's not going to learn that, that way. Or, and all of a sudden, if all of these teachers are talking at class grade level, that expectation changes. You can, you can take that curriculum and put it around your favorite topic, but there's no longer the option that you're not covering things in a progression sense. And so I view Common Core to do that, but it's so nice and supportive and more of a PLCs agenda. And thinking about these folks as really talented professionals sharing their expertise. I'm just, I'm really encouraged by what that means for kids and that disparity that parents, for whatever reason, might have felt around the experience they're going to have if they don't get that teacher or they do get this teacher. I'm hoping that that starts to dissolve a little bit around work that's happening among colleagues. And I'm hopeful that seems like that would happen.
Sure.
All right. So, thank you guys. Any other thoughts? I mean, please, if you.
I'm just a sponge.
Okay. So our next item, we managed to crank out the budget flyer and the annual report.
Yeah.
For your late night meeting, maybe the annual report, but the budget flyer is a little quicker.
I can sign a copy. So this got mailed. This got mailed up Friday. I don't know if you saw it. It's online. We did away with print. I copied, I print a hundred because most people see it digitally. But these budget flyers did go home to all box holders in Essentia. And we, we used the same format as we did last year. I've seen the, it seemed to, people seemed to like it. It's, sure, it's very dense. There's a lot of data on it. I looked at.
It was definitely dense.
Other flyers that are not as dense, but there's some, you know, some interesting factoids there.
I liked the way it was laid out and I feel like, even though it's dense, it's very readable. It's not just text.
The annual report, again, we didn't deviate from, we put a lot of work into it last year to reformat it. So we just uploaded new numbers and uploaded different pictures. Once again, we dedicated it to a number of retired educators and our friend Martin from the LRS. Forty-two years of service today. So that's just an FYI through policy 2.8, just to keep you informed. And that's all I was going to do.
And because it seems like it might fit there, budget communication. Mark and I are going to do a thirty-minute conversation around the budget on channel seventeen tomorrow. It will go live and then we replayed, I don't know, sixty, I don't know if we said. And so we're going to talk about what that's going to look like because it's not a stand and deliver. It's more of a budget preview, if you will, or even, I was, I was watching this up front, I wanted to try and get a feel of what this is. And they spoke a little bit about the process and the business manager was there, so my files will be out tomorrow. We'll deliver it tomorrow night.
Good time tomorrow.
I imagine, before we leave here, we'll, we'll, we'll figure, what I expect I'll do is, you know, pull a few of our most pertinent slides from the last budget presentation that we had because we only have thirty minutes. And the guy who monitored, Marissa, Rob, will probably also ask some questions. And that felt a little bit more what I was watching and we watched the full thirty minutes of SBS, but it was a little bit more of a conversation guided by a handful of slides. And so I think I'll be able to pull the most pertinent slides and sort of provide a profile of our district and.
So it's just, it's a conversation, it's not a presentation.
You know, they used, they used slides, but not twenty slides. I would say they probably had less than ten slides, probably somewhere in the seventies, should be. That they put up on those highlight slides or those that are sort of breaking down areas where we, you know, program changes and program reductions. So a few of our highest levels summary slides.
Okay.
And then we'll, I think, speak to those and, and I think we'll also share the conversation and set context for our process. And it will be sort of a primer for folks that might want to come and join us on April sixth for our budget presentation. And we'll direct people to our website as well for more information. We've never done this before, but the invitation was extended to us and we're taking the opportunity to give it a whirl and do our best tomorrow evening. And then we also have an opportunity for an assets reporter perspective piece, which will be due Thursday or Friday.
Monday at the latest.
Monday at the latest. We sort of know what our at-the-latest times are now with these because I feel badly, but, you know, by the time we're done with it, it seems to be always Monday when we get it in. I think we had thought when we did the last one that we would get another shot at a little bit more budget info. So I am going to open it up and see if anybody else wants to put voice to it on behalf of us. Or I can take our piece from the annual report and see if there's any place where we need to do a deep revive or cut out stuff that came from the old perspective piece.
So the letter that we edited.
Yeah, it's in the front of this. You did, thank you. It's in the front of this thing. It's the letter from the board.
Was the one in here.
Yeah.
That's also on the budget flyer. Isn't there a?
There is.
You did a smaller version of that.
The budget flyer, I did. This one has bullets that might be easier to read and because it had more space, it had a little more detail. So if anybody wants to, different voices spin on it. If you guys want to say, you know what, focus on this and expand on that and tell us to try and give it a shot, we can do that too. But I am so not proprietary around this if somebody else wants to.
I mean, my question is, does it need to be different or not?
Different than this. It may not be. I think this may be too many words. And I do think some of the context around this is, so I think that you're actually right because I think that's what I tried to do in this is pull up the budget highlights.
Exactly.
And so I shortened what we did in the earlier perspective piece, which was around context setting and education in Vermont. And then dug a little bit deeper on the budget. And so I think we're at, I don't remember how many words we talked about last year, I'm just not familiar with this. And we're wanting to be down around six or seven, I think, for the perspective.
Okay.
But if you look at what you, but just because what I'm thinking is a lot of people, even though this is available, there's not a lot of people who are necessarily going to read it. They'll read this.
Right.
So I wouldn't necessarily put this back.
They'll read the perspective.
Yeah, and this also didn't have the space or opportunity for a little bit more.
Right, with some of these bullets, like adding that into the.
So wait, if, if anybody wanted to take a stab, do you want to cash out?
Yeah.
See if you can pull up something like that.
I wouldn't be rewriting much. It would just be like, yeah.
That would be great because I, I did really, we were intentional on the last time we had a perspective opportunity to really, I, we were just barely about to pass our budget at this table. And so we weren't at a place to go super deep, I don't think, on budget. And I wanted to try and inform the community around what's going on in context around education right now. And now this is our opportunity to tell people about the budget, budget presentation coming up and to really hit budget. If this is the only thing they really, yes, what might they get from it?
Yeah.
So if you think the content's there, that would be great.
Yeah, and I mean, this is.
Online, right? It is online. So people can get to it and get more depth.
And I think we say that.
Absolutely. And I think, you know, absolutely, we, I think, sort of like we say at the end of this. So in looking at these two things, the, this letter on in the, this flyer and any other things we want to call out of it on the school board report, that would be awesome if they're, if I weren't trying to write something else, but more trying to hone the message. That'd be awesome.
Do you know if we can do things like a little call-out line?
I bet you can, yeah.
I bet we can. They're so accommodating and I would imagine, you know, the perspective sort of goes in a box itself. But I think, you know, within that.
It's pretty open.
Yeah, and I bet they would tell us if they couldn't.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, and I don't think just because this is online, you mean we shouldn't use this for the perspective piece because vast majority of people, you read the perspective because you go down further. And those who want to dig deeper are going to get there and go, oh, look, I've already read this. But hey, look at all this. Who's this strange guy?
Oh, Mark Andrews.
The original perspective piece sort of was the foundation of how I started this. So much of it got melded and changed. You know, if, if there's a few things that you want to keep from it, great. You know, I wouldn't worry that this is going to sound like I'm repeating myself over the perspective piece two months ago.
Well, I mean, there's only so many.
Because I think it was two months ago.
And there's more specific detail because you made a point the last time not to put specific detail and because we hadn't passed our budget and we still had a couple of rendition. So this is the opportunity to take what was there, jump forward into the more specific.
Oh, that would be great. Thank you guys so much. And that, that way I feel like actually we may be able to get it in the future in the week and not Monday.
With the cash flow view.
So I'm not going to touch a thing until Cashel's looked at those two things and just given us, you know. And, you know, what I want to share with you, I think, if I haven't already, these, I may have shared them with you by now.
Okay, if you can.
If I haven't, I'll make sure to share.
Just so I have like a copy of this.
But I'll make sure, yeah.
Format.
No, that would be great. Just, just rename, like copy it and rename it and then go to town. I'm, I'm running out of original thoughts on this topic, so. I appreciate any set of eyes or voice in it. That would be great. Thank you so much. And then the budget presentation, again, unless anybody else is dying to present it and I'm completely fine with that, I will take those slides and that will be a sort of stand and deliver on the sixth.
Oh, okay.
At the middle school? It is at the middle school. I always wonder why that is, but because we're all so accustomed to meeting here, but I think.
Do people come?
More space, big audience.
Fury for the whole.
Huge audience.
Or whatever that show up.
In case there is. I, the other thing I think that is helpful in it is that that's where the folks vote. And so those who don't either come or have kids in schools and may not know this space, if they're coming there for the budget presentation, will be reminded that's also where they're voting. And I think those folks that come to that budget presentation are not the folks with kids in schools. And so if we were to move it now, even though it seems a little, makes no sense for the families, it probably, we probably can't, we're not moving it. I think it's in writing somewhere, so we're not moving it. So I think I will also take a look at, we have done the budget trifold boards with sort of highlight features and put them up at the schools before the vote for drop-off and pickup. I don't, I don't know how much they help or don't help. I don't think anybody's been able to stand there lately. I don't think that works.
I know like last year, it really didn't generate much.
Oh, you know, we still left it. Sitting a couple of places.
Yeah, we've left it sitting a couple of places. We, we were there at like pickup for a few days. It really didn't generate and I don't necessarily know if that population, it, it just overall tends to be a population net. Is more positive for the budget and has less questions is my, my personal take on it. I don't know how much value that has and if it's just up without us being there, does it, do we know if it has any value?
Yeah. Do we, do we think it raises any attention to the idea that the budget's coming as opposed to just a notice on the doors? And, you know, the reminder and.
Yeah, I mean, I think the reminder's in, ideally in the principal newsletters.
The ETO will ask for it.
And with.
You know, we have the signs that go up around town.
Yeah, right.
Yes, yes. So if we think of any other ideas, I think that's something you guys can share directly with me or we can get to at the next meeting. Because we'll have the, the budget information on the sixth and then the vote isn't till a week from today. And that last week is first time. We've tried doing, I've done. We've tried doing, um, I've done conversations with library. I think we've tried to do even neighborhood conversations and, um, very little has been done since. So we have learned time and time again on exit polls from folks. They're getting their information from the Essex Reporter. And we are so fortunate to have had Matt Pudini so invested in understanding our work and reporting it with such integrity that I think there's been a lot of coverage. And he's not here to...
But he's, okay. I was like, I haven't seen him for a while.
He's been coming to the red study meetings. Maybe he's sick of evening meetings too.
Fair enough.
He's seen enough of you, Kim.
He's had enough of us. Um, but, so, uh, we can check in with him to see his availability for the sixth as well. And, um, maybe check to see if, I don't know, is it already ten, will be available for that full budget presentation? Presuming it would get up soon enough to, um, have effect.
Yeah.
Um, so if we have any other communication ideas, which you shared, um, our website, I think, has it front and center. And if it's not that front and center, we'll make sure it's...
Yeah. And maybe I can take this graphic for the Facebook page.
Yeah. Absolutely. That would, yeah. It would be great. And certainly a reminder around April sixth.
Right. And we have this in a P, right? Um, is that this one? Cause like even this.
Yeah. An attachment would be great. Yeah. And then the link to the report. And so I think, um, even if, if you guys have any ideas, but if there's anything that you want to do, Cashel, go for it. If there's anything that I think of or we think of together and want to share and, um, and see how we can spread the word as best we can. Soon, I think the early ballots will be available. I know John Sonnich got in touch with me and has a warning. He was looking at the draft. So click is hard at work. Our point of click. So the superintendent evaluation process, I, um, we're struggling with it, I think. And I think this three sixty evaluation idea is important. We talked about it this summer and we needed more feedback to the process to address the qualitative aspects of the superintendent's job. Um, and coming up with the right questions is our challenge because we get a lot of our information from the monitoring reports and that's a big piece of Mark's evaluation by policy governance. It might be the only piece of his evaluation. And yet, as we've thought about it over the last several years, there's a component of the job that's related to the qualitative aspects of his work that doesn't necessarily come out in a monitoring report and one of the structure for evaluating that more so than just our conversation around an effective session. Um, so in looking at the three sixty evaluation with the support of the SBA, we were trying to fill up the questions. And I think you guys did a good job talking about it last week and we're trying to get down to maybe less questions and maybe the right questions and still struggling with the language being accessible for all of the target groups that we're trying to get information from. And, um, so I shared some, um, exchanges with Rachel and Mark and I spoke too. And what I love for us to think about and share each other's thoughts on is there's a current draft that what I did is I looked at a Massachusetts, Massachusetts has a statewide superintendent evaluation rubric. It's awesome. And it was, or it was, it was helping me pull the, the big topic areas into line. And I loved that he, under each of them were indicators and a rubric. And, you know, it felt like something you could really know what you were responding to. I don't know that it's something we can use and we certainly, I don't think we can use it right now. Like, you know, I'd love it if it became part of a statewide conversation. But aside from that, it helped me sort of pull our, our questions into categories. But even still, those, that language is not really accessible for people who aren't in education speak to probably know what they're looking for to say, oh yeah, there's evidence of that. That makes sense to me. Or my interaction with the superintendent can be, yes, viewed as a four on that one or a three or most parents may not even have that interaction. So one of the things we came to, and it was funny, Rachel, you were, she sent a few questions in and I am going to just pass out that part of, if it's okay with you, that part of your, um, your email to me. Because ironically, as I was going to try and come up with the right categories for the questions, I did kind of the same thing. I just dotted down words that we'd been looking for that I thought people get. And I didn't even know in my head why I was doing it. I was just trying to say, okay, what are the, what are these skills actually really? Collaboration, respect on this responsiveness, you know, decisiveness, supportiveness, you know? I was like, and then Rachel sent me her email and I was like, oh. We are, we are both having the same worries at the same time, you know, or... So one of the end games that I'm thinking about in addition to sharing this, oh.
This is all one thing.
Yeah. Okay. So what I did is I, I printed out, I printed out very rough notes of what Rachel and I exchanged on and also the current draft of the language around the superintendent evaluation, self-evaluation, um, or three sixty evaluation questions. And Mark and I talked and what I'm wondering if we might do is go with, if we like, some version of the big questions for, um, the leadership team, all staff, and maybe some of those community leaders that Mark is interacting with that are educational leaders outside of, you know, sitting right here. Um, and then on the parent piece of it, to, for right this moment, represent that, ask the PTO leadership team if they would reflect on these questions and contribute. And then Mark and I talked about maybe doing a broader survey, um, kind of like the climate survey, not us necessarily doing it, but Mark doing it as evidence to his other monitoring towards treatment of staff and treatment of students and families. And those might get to be sort of characteristic questions in a really easy way. I don't...
I always thought I'd do a lot of that.
I, I just, I don't know where else to go with it. And I welcome any thoughts and questions on it. I don't want us to ditch it altogether. I want us to be sensitive to timing. And I want us to have it be accessible to people receiving it.
Yeah. And parents aren't going to necessarily be interested in taking the time to do all this. But something that's kind of like, you know, these three questions, Rachel, when I saw that, I was like, oh yeah, this makes a whole lot of sense.
Well, that's the interaction that parents have. So, so actually, you know, when you, so I actually, you know, told John, he was the late person, so he agreed to lay down on the couch and answer the questions. But, but, you know, just having this conversation and just, you know, he's had some experience on the school board. He, he's done this sort of process, um, at, at the high school level and with his background. And so just sitting around and what are we looking for from the parents? Like what are they able to answer? And to, to have this framework and not even know, how would I even know? What, what is my data that I would judge any of those criteria on? And so you start thinking back, what are the interactions that parents are having with Mark? And what, what is it we're looking for for feedback and how do we evaluate it? And it just seemed like, so we were just talking about what, what sorts of things can help direct us in that. And, and so that's where I just kind of jotted down, like I love, as we were talking, I just kind of started jotting things down. Um, so I just think that that, if we want that. The other thing that, you know, we did talk about is too, is, um, just keeping in mind, you know, and he just, you know, he, you know, we just talked about sometimes though, if it's coming from central office, that might though in its own way skew some of the results. So just to keep that in mind.
Well, and I think it actually will come from the...
The SBA.
Okay. So, um, yeah.
For that reason.
Okay. Just, yeah. But that could skew.
And we, um, Mark and I were talking about these other questions. I was even thinking, the whole staff or just maybe the leaders, teacher leaders and, um, and then, but Mark felt really strongly that everybody should have an opportunity to be responsive on the staff level. And then all teachers will sort of, I mean, teachers understand rubrics and evidence and they interact with this language so much more so than any late parent. Um, and I would believe too of sort of the PTO folks, they may be able to reflect on this. Just even the leadership team, just saying there'll be another survey for parents. But as representatives of parents, which we kind of get to be too, we get to wear both hats when we're responding to this, um, letting them know that the intent is that in the spring there'll be another survey that will be broader for parents. Um, it felt like it could bring all of our concerns and all the things we're looking to get out of that meeting together. And inform our process more broadly for right now for our superintendent evaluation and sort of inform the progress and environment in the district by, you know, maybe a simpler survey in the spring that, you know, shares more information by way of a monitoring report around treatment.
Staff, students and parents.
Yeah. I love that connection. Yeah.
And then it gives us a policy lens on the work. And I think that that is also very important. That feels comfortable for folks. Okay. Thank you so much. It is so, this is literally what I was writing as I was trying to come up with our categories. And I'm like, okay, well, nothing else. These things are like what we're talking about.
What are the timelines for the implementation of the, of feedback survey?
Of this one?
Yeah.
Of this one. So I called Harry, he wasn't there, but I left a message. So I think the only thing left to do now that we know the university people are talking about, if you guys have any suggestions for these questions, these ones through twelve and then the other, number thirteen of what else didn't we ask that we should have? Um, if you guys don't mind getting those to me either right now or later tonight or tomorrow, I will get to Harry with this. And then I think he said, you know, seven, ten days, allowing people the opportunity to get it out and turn it around. Um, and then maybe...
So you always going to write the, the letter, the introducing the survey?
I think I'm supposed to. He had, he had a letter, which was a draft. And the only thing I wanted to really alter about that was that, um, sort of explain a little bit what the process is. To just say that the superintendent is evaluated, um, regularly through monitoring reports and each year by looking at that, you know, collection of data. And this would just help inform the process further around the qualitative aspects of the job. And thank you for your participation and everything. Um, so, you know, I want people to understand and appreciate that we always evaluate our superintendent. And we always do annual evaluations.
Earlier today.
And what they say is...
Related to that, yeah.
Oh, good. Okay. Yeah. It's all...
Like annual review process that happens, you know?
Um, because there are districts, I guess, that, that, not always evaluations, but we are not among those. So we, um, that is quite of our regular practice. And this is really just an improvement of our practice, I think, in getting feedback from additional sources. So thank you guys so much. I, I know it's taken longer, I think, than we anticipated, but I think, you know, we're always more important than this. Knocking it out. It's something new. It doesn't have to be perfect. We will, we will improve upon it, you know, another year as well.
And then we'll verify that the information that we're receiving is what we were looking for.
And that it informs the process, that it like either helps identify patterns or helps inform what Mark wants to do around zoning development. Like it was really intended over the development tools, so let's make sure it does that, but let's actually get it out too. So thank you guys so much. Um, and then I think it's you, Dan. Is it you? Okay, good. Thank you. Like, is it a set? You've got that?
Yep. I did not write anything revolutionary and unusual in this one. Four point four, chair's role. The chair is specially empowered member of the Essex Town School Board and chooses the integrity of the board's process and secondary, secondarily and occasionally represents the board to outside parties. I don't need to go through all of it, but basically you follow certain rules in keeping us in order in meetings and setting, um, agenda and making sure that we are all, that everyone is able to speak their mind and not run too late. And, I mean, without going into super detail, I, I felt like, you know, as amazingly as your first year as a board chair, then I think you are, you are definitely in compliance. I mean, um, but I felt it was still worth making notes. I realize it says, if you mark anything other than in compliance. It's like, well, you know, sometimes I think it's worth talking about even, if we are in compliance, it's worth making note. Meeting agenda topics, as noted on the agenda, are consistently correlated with relevant policies. And I think it's really valuable that, you know, if we go through there every single one of our topics and say, why are we talking about this? Oh, it's new policy, four point two, it's policy, three point four, whatever. I think it's very important to make sure that we are talking about what we're supposed to be talking about. Um, on the occasion that an item is not on an agenda, these are not on the agenda, I brought four or five members with me. I feel like we'd usually, I don't want to say this in a bad way, but I usually feel like we deal with those very efficiently. I don't mean deal, that's kind of a wrong word, but address them. But we are very good at keeping, or you're very good at keeping us, returning us to the topic of the agenda and making sure if that's something that needs to happen, needs to be talked about, it's forwarded to the right place, often our, our agenda from that time or wherever. Um, and you're very good. I know you asked one question. You're very good at keeping up the parliamentary rules. Some guys are like, ah, what are we talking about?
Are we supposed to...
But the fact that you asked that, I think, indicates that maybe we're not perfect, but we're trying very hard at conscientiousness. Um, and as far as delegating duty, you've only twice delegated duty to me, your co-chair, and done so in such a way that it was very easy for me to be the chair for you.
Thank you. But now, aside from that, then you should know that, like, your role in helping me do negotiations. Everybody's done so much, you guys are almost too late. So I'm just, I'm going to say that while you're in it, so. You think it's just twice.
The last paragraph is nothing but gushing praise for you, Kim. I, it, it blows my mind how much, I think about how much I do for this board and I go, wow, Kim does like five times a month. You really do a ton. So this is a, call it an official endorsement of thank you. I hope my fellow board members will say goodbye to that. You do a ridiculous amount of stuff. It's tiresome.
Campaign manager.
Oh, my gosh.
So I'm happy to answer any further questions if you have them or if you want to make comments. There you go.
I'm going to make a motion to approve because I'll have to go get Zachary. I don't want to miss it, so. Well, I want to thank you guys and I want to tell you that I am new to this and you guys have made it really easy. And I am just floored by everybody's willingness to step forward and just, you know, we need to do this, you guys. And there's somebody doing it. And it's just great. It's, I feel really lucky. And I know I'm fumbling through this and, you know, I appreciate your support. But I am also appreciative when you guys let me know if there's something we need to do differently because we will be in a continuous improvement mode too. And we'll figure out stuff that we want to try and do differently. And we did off a lot when we looked at what we wanted to do this summer. And we did it without really fully appreciating, I think, the time that we've been taking to do contracts and the time that, I don't think we realized we'd be in trouble then it started to make. So I think, um, it's just, I feel incredibly supported in this. So you guys have to be committed and, you know, also to be invited to let me know and there are things that we need to do differently and better. So thank you.
The caveat that I'd offer, Dan, and not necessarily to be reflected in this annual report, is the relationship that, that the superintendent values having with a board chair. It's not, it's not, there's nothing that really mentions that in this policy, but I think it's tantamount to the success of, of running the board is making sure that we've got a really good, tight communication between, and I can attest to, yes, clearly.
Yes. Mark and I said...
I mean, I now sign, see you soon. No kidding.
Literally probably in the next few hours.
We'll wait for you to do your motion.
That Kim spends more time with you than her family. It's been, it's been a lot of work this year, but I've enjoyed it and it's important work. But I, I think it needs to be recognized. And I think it lives within this policy that the commitment, not only to run the meeting, but also making sure there's a conduit between, you know, between the...
but also making sure there's a conduit between, you know, the central office and the board. So your form will develop a journey, having backstory and all that. And value the role in sort of problem solving together. I mean, super teds cannot do their job without an effective board, but as well as an effective chair.
Well, and I think our planning time is well spent. I hope that it feels that way to you guys in respect to the agenda. But I think again, this year has been exceptional for the amount of work. At least it feels to me, our time, Dan probably most of it, you and I, and over the years. And I feel like I've had really good, open support in knowing what needs to come up on these agendas. And, you know, what else do we need to make sure that is full board conversation? Is that for my time constraints? But, you know, we're not even doing that badly today, to be honest, considering how big the meeting was. I think we're doing all right. And I second that. You put more time than I could have ever fully appreciated of the work you're doing behind the teams. But, you know, really thoughtful and the right work. And that's good to know that you're checking us on that. And you're supporting us on the gray areas and on, you know, on the stuff that we're working on. I think we're good.
Just in time, there you go. I will. I will make a motion that we set. Four point two.
Four point four.
Four point four. Whoops, I was looking the wrong side. Sorry. Four point four as.
I will second the motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor? I pass this point zero. Thank you, Dan. So we are on to a first reading of the council. This revised state policy is, you guys talked about it last meeting, didn't you, Mark?
Well, I just looked and wanted a copy. We're going to do a formal first reading.
Okay. Do you want to speak to it all or did you get to do that before?
Well, we spoke a little bit about it on the night, but this is, this is embedded by the SBA. It's one of their model policies. You had your work planned, identified the first six policies that were the easiest to sort of move forward. This, I think, was probably the next tier. But the reason I put a little bit of urgency on it is we're starting to put our staff and students sharing handbooks together for next year. And we felt that we needed to better reflect current model policy. The last time we did this was 2012. It's not a, you know, there's a new one. It reflects all federal guidelines, SIPA, for example, Child Internet Protection Act. So we believe the IT folks, the IT team believe it reads more friendly. It's more accessible by kids and by families. It's more sort of proactive rather than get caught doing this is what's going to happen. The one thing that's outside of the vet, the model policy is on page three. I think we sent you a copy of the revision. And it states in the event that there are reasonable grounds that a student has engaged bullying, harassment, or hazing in violation of the law or school policies, personal and school issued digital devices are subject to search. By state statute, you don't have responsibility to have a mandated search and seizure policy. It's recommended, but it's not mandated. Because we don't have one of those, I felt we needed a little bit of protection to have something. I think it would live inside this policy in the event, because that's where most of the, you know, poor judgment is made by middle school kids, especially when they're using handhelds improperly. But right now, we'd go get it anyway, you know. But I think this would strengthen our position if we had it nested in this policy. Kim and I have talked, we might want to bring forward a search and seizure policy in the future. But this is a quick way to get it done.
So just in reading it, the same paragraph is on page two. So I just have noticed.
Tell me where you are.
Second paragraph down on page two. At least when I printed it out. So I didn't know if somebody had injected it already.
You're right. It got, looks like it got.
And then I didn't know, so I just wanted to mention that before this goes forward farther, that it might have just been injected twice when you decided to do it.
No, I think it was just a typo problem.
Okay. So I just placed.
It belongs, I think it belongs on page three.
Page three, okay.
Under four.
And that was the other question.
It's the same content, right, Rachel?
It's the exact same paragraph. So I just didn't know if it had gotten, like when you went to put it.
We've been doing a lot of little edits here, so.
So that was just, I just thought before we went forward with it. And then the other question was, you know, just about search and seizure. Because it was very much in terms of if, if computer use, you know, technology is used for specifically the bullying. But I didn't know if we wanted to leave that open. What if there was another reason that we wouldn't want to confiscate somebody's? And I didn't know if that leant here or you mentioned it being maybe a different discussion.
I just pulled up the SBA modeling. Exact question you were talking about was that we're adding a paragraph because we don't have a broader search and seizure. Oops, maybe it's not required, but there is model language. And it, you know, is not a policy governance policy. But we have other, you know, mandatory policies in this one. And while we are probably practicing doing it when we need to and we'll be supported. And the parent handbook was where my setup lives, the idea that.
And there's a set of procedures that are, I didn't bring them with me, that is for the companion, much more specificity. What I'm hearing you say is that we want to expand that paragraph, say, and/or other policies, school board policies. So we've got this bullying, harassment, and hate, and those are the typical things that come up. But there might be other violations that are created by inappropriate use that we could expand that a little bit.
Why? Because I'm just wondering if, if you don't have it in there, could potentially something happen where, and then you don't necessarily have the policy to help guide that.
That's the purpose of our first reading, so let me play around with that.
Just, that's a great idea. And then would you guys be interested in having us bring back an actual search and seizure model policy that probably lives there? Together?
Lives right down on their website.
So I'm looking at it right now. So let's put that on the agenda for next time, Mark, when you bring this back for a second meeting. We'll do a first reading on search and seizure.
We don't have a large, we don't have a, we met with an attorney. We brought an attorney in to be with our student management specialist, school counselors, and school leaders just to go deeper into some of the policy issues related to bullying and harassment. And she was very instructive. When I went up to her afterwards and asked her about this question, she said, you need to have one of those. As she's speaking through the attorney lens, even at the middle level, it'd be appropriate to have a search and seizure. You know, the First Amendment rights come in and sometimes it's hard to get stuff because of that. Policies.
And it's good that we have it just across the, the need for it. But why not protect ourselves?
Existing and procedure and student handbook really isn't protecting us in the same way that policy does. So.
Great, thank you. I have feedback.
So just a question, does it have, so when it comes back next week, is it a second reading? Or is it, okay. So I just want to make sure.
Even though it's been edited.
Even though it's been edited.
So is it second reading and possible adoption or is it second?
You've always done three recalls.
Let's do that, especially since we're bringing the other one, so model on search and seizure. Maybe the other one, if there's no change to it, we go for second and possible when we do the other one for third. You know, like that way we just adopt them together on the same day. And that would be good. Okay. So the lead committee update, Mark and Judy. And actually, you know what, Rachel, because you were there and you got to really fully observe.
You had access to the website, right?
Yeah, yeah. Do you want to share some of it and if there's any color that Mark and I want to learn to?
Well, basically, I think what it was, and actually hearing feedback from a couple of different committee members like afterwards, just different, running into different people. But what it was, it provided a big overview in terms of the structure really, and the difference in structure between our school district and the CCSU school district. And so the overall talk was about the difference, more the difference in the policy, the governance structure within that, how each one works and the efficiency, really. I think glaringly, and others thought they glaringly pointed out some of the efficiencies that we have that within the superintendency, they don't currently have those same efficiencies. In the S U, yes, in the S U. So, and so, you know, that was just, I think, the biggest takeaway from, it was a fairly lengthy discussion. But the other piece of it that I think was important was the discussion afterwards in terms of the topic of providing the committee more time to actually discuss some of the different things after the fact. So not just giving the presentations, but also having more discussion time, which I think is something that will be a focus in the future. So that's, you know, from sitting and observing, that's my takeaway from that meeting. I have a lot to share.
Yeah, Mark sort of shared how we work. And Judy, with a maybe more complex structure, had a lot of slides on sort of the different levels of their organization. And after each of those presentations, Mark, just to bring us back to some of the essential questions and how the superintendents can inform the work of the committee. And that's the piece where I think we really somewhat ran out of time for the length of the CCSU presentation on their structure. And so Brendan Keeney is our chair of that committee, which is very refreshing. And he and Brian O'Regan, who's the facilitator, invited people to provide them with like a sixty minute write-in after of their takeaway from the meeting. And, I mean, we need to ask them, like, under your current structure, what are the things that look so well for you? And what are the things that you feel you're challenged by under your current structure? And pose that to both of the superintendents for their input. Because to me, that would be most illuminating around what we're pointing towards, what are we trying to get to? And it also had me feeling as though it would be great to hear from the committee as a collective, you know, folks considering this information, before we get expert testimony, sort of give those experts direction on what we're looking to inform the process. And just in running into Brendan at the high school teacher conferences and getting to talk about his name online, that was definitely of interest to him too. So he's gonna, he and Brian are together looking at the agenda, which had a certain trajectory. And trying to make sure that it's pointing back to some of the essential questions that are going to inform the process so that the committee will be, you know, able to anticipate what the community wants to know and really respond to it in the study. The other piece that I expect we'll see that has been on the agenda, but has not really ended up at time on the agenda because we ran out of time for other things like the last meeting, is the communication engagement piece. And so I know that's coming back and we'll have more space on the agenda if I look forward to it. We are in fact both needing to study and engage before we're going to be prepared to answer the articles and bring a report to our community. And if that doesn't have the same trajectory for deadline, or you know, a targeted date, thirtieth, or whatever the original draft deadline was, that it would be artificial if it's not, if we're not able to respond to all of the information we think our community would need to be informed of. Also, there's no November vote unless we make a November vote this time around. It's not otherwise statewide election. So, you know, where that was thought to initially be a target, it may or may not even make sense as a target. So I think, again, we need to, you know, make sure what they're all and have responded to whatever the legislature comes out with too, which might be a challenge if they're not done their work till the end of May and we're trying to be done, you know, in June. So I think, you know, all of those things are playing in the process. But I was really encouraged in your perspective from it and sort of us sitting there, our perspective on it, and what it sounds like, but I just want to just make sure the process reflects.
I hope it's not, I hope it's not a linear process. It feels linear to me right now. I hope it can move based on where the committee wants to go and not feel like we've been cornered into it by such and such a date. You know, for instance, there will be an opportunity to visit with our neighbors to the east with Michael Marks and John Albertini. Mike, I believe, had a role in facilitating the discussion that you were involved with Andrew. And I think that he, there were some pretty significant lessons learned, even though their merger was different. Because we're literally merging two organizations. They merged within, and so that's a different animal. But I think there are other people that we want to be able to invite in. I'd love to have a student voice around and talk about D cap. I'd rather have, you know, a senior, junior, sophomore, and a freshman talk about their experiences in terms of their readiness for a high school experience. I think we have to be sort of willing to, but again, I'm not leading the process. But I guess if I were to have a role in trying to reshape that agenda, it would be more sort of holistic and moving where we feel we need to move and not just get one perspective with many perspectives. Having been a resident of Chippewa, so again, I'm living there. I think the second timeout was stronger because it was more inclusive of the community in terms of engaging people. And I believe that that's a really important part of it. And Kim's talked about that. All you guys have talked about it important, about just giving information, but engaging stakeholder groups throughout the process. If it's linear, I don't think that's going to happen as much as you'd like it to happen.
I'll throw in my two cents because of the fourteen merger names that we had.
Well, we've spoken of your great report, by the way, on that table. And we reflected on the report from.
That you submitted for the AOE.
The AOE report.
Oh, okay.
So it was acknowledged that we loved the tone and tenor of that report as a committee, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Having been through two reddish studies, I think the two comments I'd make is you want to make sure that you figure out in the end what it is that you're trying to accomplish. And that you do have to have a lot of community engagement. There's, it's difficult sometimes, as you know, given that there's no public even here at your meeting, which I know is available on video. But, you know, it's often difficult to get people to understand what you're trying to do. And when they show up at the ballot box, it's a lot easier to be fearful of the unknown than it is to place faith in people who put a lot of thought and effort into doing something that makes sense. So I think, you know, you have to first be clear on what it is you're trying to accomplish, whether it's going through the motions to satisfy whatever House three sixty-one or whatever ends up coming out this year. Or, you know, or if you do have some real polls.
And just the, sorry, isn't it, we're not, you would not consider it based on the complexity of one organization. I mean, that's not the reason why we're doing it. I mean, yes, one organization is more complex, but that's not the impetus behind the question of, is it good for kids?
And I loved how you brought that redirection back as into the focus of good for kids and that there's more to it than either simplifying or, and I would never do it justice, but you did a very, very good job of bringing that back around. And others in the board seem to really acknowledge that too.
Yes. It's a, it's a big group of very interested and engaged people. I mean, twenty people is a big group.
Yeah, it is. And I think Brendan's leadership will be really valuable. And he comes from a place of wanting to ask those essential questions. And I think the other thing that he and I share is having come onto this board as the first study was wrapping up and really being suspect of the evidence that was being brought to bear. And our board took a resolution not to support it. And, you know, two, three communities voted it down, the Junction of the Town two to one, and the Westford, I think, tender one or something, I don't know, a lot more than one.
They weren't ready.
And it's a really different time. And it's definitely time to reevaluate this situation in the current context of what we're trying to do for kids. Personal learning plans extend from seventh to twelfth. Our district doesn't, you know, there are reasons to look at this that are about kids. And the study has to be credible. Our community has to be able to look at this and know that we've asked the right questions and we've gotten the right evidence and data that we're not predetermining the outcome and then looking for evidence to drive that outcome. I think we have to go into it with an open mind, ask the right questions that reflect our community's thoughts and concerns. And then really be thoughtful about the evidence that comes with it. And then put it all together and believe in it. And, you know, you guys had studied it more recently, so your process was equal. Even your process was longer than a few months, but it was quite longer than a few. even your process was longer than a few months, but it was quite longer than a few months. But you guys had studied it more recently and you were maybe able to go to that place of engagement.
But it's a whole different animal. I mean, all night as I've been sitting here, you know, I keep coming back to how it's just such a different environment here in terms of the way your buildings are located, in terms of the number of students that you have, in terms of the way that you organize. It's not better or worse, it's just completely different than what my world has been. And, you know, I think that's true throughout the state. And that's, I spent a lot of time with the legislature this winter. And that's a lot of what they wrestle with is how do you, how do you deal with these, you know, school districts with thousands of kids and these other districts that have 12, 14 kids? You know, it's crazy. Trying to figure out how to, how to provide some guidance for improving student learning and reducing costs without, you know, trying to get the Guild Halls of Vermont to look like Essex because it doesn't.
It's really interesting, Mark. So I know Mark and Judy have committed to being more support as we go through it. And I look forward to it continually. Thank you, Rachel, for continuing. No.
Can't guarantee over that.
I know, and I appreciate that. And as an advocate, you and I will definitely want to just double check. I know I feel like there's one that I can't go to, but I'll double check Brendan too and see whether on that day you get to sit there or, you know, even if you get to sit where you are. And we need to acknowledge that Matt Priden has benefited. And he has captured the essence of those meetings really well in the articles he's writing. Have you noticed that as well? Like, you know, you're never quite sure. It's a huge group and, like I said, he's invested so much time in understanding our process here. And he continues to really reflect what's going on in a way that that is such an asset for us with respect to community communication and engagement that is invaluable. And we're very fortunate.
And I can tell you also the communications little subgroup we're meeting on Thursday. I think it's Wednesday or Thursday evening. In the face of some of the setbacks, by the way. Thank you for doing that.
Executive session.
Ah, yes. So before we get to here, I would like to bring the executive session for the purposes of the personal matter and contract negotiations update.
Do that. I make a motion that we exit into executive session for those purposes.
Bye.